May I have a motion to return back to open session?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in open session. May I have a motion to certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond, yes. Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes, is the P.A. system on?
Yeah, wasn't before. Now it is.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Sorry, we're all a little off kilter. We'll get there. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to honors, awards, and recognitions.
At this time, we will move into our honors, awards, and recognitions, and I would like to ask Ms. Jennifer Weaver, Director of Secondary Education, to come forward with her awards for tonight.
Good evening, everyone. If you remember, a few meetings ago, we had the soccer teams here from Christiansburg and Blacksburg who won a special award, and the boys soccer team wasn't able to come at that time, so they're here tonight to accept their award, and Shelley Blumenthal is here to introduce his team and tell you about the award.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having our guys here tonight. Pretty much, we just came from practice, so they're a little bit disheveled, but they've worked hard today, so they deserve that. For the past 15 years, the National Soccer Coaches Association of America has recognized high school teams for achieving academically, and this is our 13th of the 15 years that Blacksburg High School Boys Soccer Team has, in 2014, has earned this award. Boys were one of 135 high school teams to earn this award. You have to have a 3.25 cumulative grade point average to even be considered. There were 51 schools nationwide that recognized both boys and girls, and our girls team, as you know, was recognized, so we were one of 51 that had both. And this 2014 group, last year's squad, they had a 3.56 cumulative grade point average combined. So, very proud of these guys, and you can see them out in the audience here. I also want to mention a couple of other things about this team. One is that Andrew Kim, who is now a freshman at Washington and Lee University, where he's continuing his athletic career both as a soccer player and a track athlete, was our seventh National Soccer Coaches Association of America Scholar All-American. Andrew only had a 4.1667 GPA, and he was a first-team All-State selection, and to be considered for that award, students have to have at least a 3.75 grade point average. And on top of that, Andrew's just a wonderful human being as well. A couple of things I want to mention about this team that go beyond the field, they've been fortunate to do very, very well in that area and beyond the academic arena, is as a team, we talk a lot about, or at least we've been looking in that direction of trying to build men for others, and this group will be, again, participating on April 18th, on a Saturday morning. They'll volunteer with the Special Olympics over at Radford University, we're finalizing our plans to do that. There also, on May 1st, we'll have a Friday night program where we're going to support, help save the next girl, and we feel it's very important for our young men to demonstrate that support for women and anti-violence. And even today, we talked a little bit about athletic ability and just economic power and social prestige, sexual conquest, that doesn't make a man. Those are false lies of masculinity, and we spend some time. So I'm very, very proud of these guys beyond what they do on the field and beyond what they do in the classroom. And anyhow, thank you again for honoring this group, guys. Yes.
Your name?
Coach, would you mind coming back to the podium, introducing the team? Just being where you are, guys. This young man here is Ty Glesko. Ty, raise your hand. Ty is going to be attending Christopher Newport University, where he was recruited to play soccer. Next to him is Shane Meacham. Shane is a senior also, and signed a letter of intent to play at Division I University of North Carolina Wilmington. Dan Friedberg is another senior, and Dan is receiving a large, very large academic scholarship to attend Lynchburg College, where he's been recruited to play soccer. Next to him is Austin Prosser, another senior. Got a lot of seniors here, that's good. Austin Prosser is a senior, also his third year on the varsity, and he's been recruited. He'll be playing at Mary Washington College, or University, University of Mary Washington. Eli Van Gilder is a junior. All right. And Bo Houchen's next to him, the best dressed of the bunch, I guess, so far, okay, is a junior. And Nathan Teagarden, who's our second Teagarden on, in our program, Chris graduated many years ago. Gage Carroll, who is a goalkeeper, is also going to be playing at Lynchburg College. Cam Roberts is a sophomore. And then next to him is Will Lincoln-Hoker, who is a senior, who'll be playing soccer at the University of Mary Washington. Harrison Bankhead, who's recovering from a broken leg, where they put a rod in his leg and has made an unbelievable comeback, and is back starting. He's a four-year varsity player, and he'll be, not sure where he's going to go yet. He has four great options, and he's trying to make those decisions pretty soon, very large school. And Cam Bissel is a junior for us as well. Okay? Thank you very much.
That concludes our honors for tonight. We will take a quick break so that board members may congratulate the juniors and seniors.
To watch, they really are, and they really have fun playing that game.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public address. At every regularly scheduled board meeting, the Montgomery County Public School Board sets aside up to 30 minutes for members of the community, teachers, staff, students, to address the board concerning public education matters. The way this works is, when I call your name, you'll come forward, you'll state your name, your address, and then your three minutes will begin. You'll have three minutes, up to three minutes, to address the board. There will be no response from the board, as per our protocol, but should we need to discuss your item, we will do so either in old business, new business, or if it's an agenda item, it will get discussed later. So with that said, I have two people on the public address sign-up sheet. The first one is Jeffrey Noble.
My name's Jeffrey Noble, from 1410 Hillcrest Drive, Blacksburg. I came to support the proposal to change the school times. I've given you a sheet with some research that I found online. It looks like everyone's already absorbed all those, so it's probably a bit superfluous at this time. So I'll just let you know what my experience has been with my children. I emailed everyone in January. I have two children, age, well, now age 12 and 10, and when my oldest was, turned 11 years old a few months after that, he used to get up regularly about 6:30, or sometimes earlier. After he hit that age, within a few months, he started going to bed later and getting up later. He didn't want to get up for school. So he became crankier and harder, and now, with the school start time in middle school for him being as early as it is, he gets up at 6 o'clock, which usually on Monday, we have to help him get out of bed a little bit, but he's doing it all on his own. He's also taken it on himself to go to bed earlier than he used to go to bed, and then he tries to catch up on sleep during the weekends. My younger son, however, is still going to bed quite early and getting up sometimes with my older son, Garrett. He doesn't have to, but he is awake as it is. So I am very much for the change in school time. As far as I'm concerned, it can't happen soon enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Second on the list is Will Crowe.
I'm Will Crowe, from 2746 Ellett Road in Christiansburg, and I just wanted to say that I have a completely opposite opinion of the gentleman that preceded me up here. I think it appears that the school board is just following suit with other counties that surround us, but are not actually making an informed decision regarding this. There's a lot of information out there that does say that middle school and high school kids are going to school too early. That's completely valid, but there's not any information that you're making this decision on that says that our elementary school students need to be going earlier. From what I can see in the information that you guys have provided, it really appears to be just a cut and paste from a website called LaterHighSchoolStartTimes.net. If a high school student presented the research you guys are in that manner, I think it'd be plagiarism. I mean, you just took a website, took all the data that they had already put together, and then put it back out. But with a name like that, I don't see how it can be viewed as an unbiased resource. I'm not certain that they are taking all the research or just cherry picking what they want that supports their premise. There's, none of the research that you provided showed that there was any benefit to elementary school-age students to go in later, and I don't see how you can have a preschool student at a bus stop at 6:00 in the morning. That, to me, seems unrealistic. Additionally, that most of the research didn't really show there's a whole lot of GPA changes, and none of them, none of them recommended changing elementary school start times. Actually, the Brookings Institute one recommended getting away with staged busing, having everyone go at the same time if need be, so. I didn't think that you, there was much evaluation of the survey from the elementary school parents, which constitute about half of the grades in our school system with pre-K all the way through 5th grade. 45% of elementary school students already are hard aroused for school, so going an hour earlier won't make that better. And then also, in all your communications, that you say that this won't negatively impact elementary school students, or that there's no research that says it will, and there is actually. The state of Kentucky has released data last year of 718 elementary schools, and the gist of their whole research is that all you're doing is passing the buck. Starting early's not good for anyone. Switching this only transfers the problem to your elementary school students. If you guys would like a copy of this, I'd be happy to give it to you, because I don't think any of you have read it. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of the folks who have signed up to speak at this point. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come to the podium and address the Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Moving on to consent items. If there are no items to be pulled from consent, I will assume, we will assume that consent items are approved. Anyone have anything to pull? Any questions? Field trips, all of those things? Very good. May I have, we're moving on to the personnel report. May I have a motion to accept the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second. All those, oh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is approved. Next on the agenda is financial reports. May I have a motion to accept the financial reports and pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Bills have been paid. We will now turn it over to Mrs. Blackburn for superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. First item this evening is a request to change a meeting date in November. Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015, is the first Tuesday in November and a regularly scheduled board meeting date. The county administration would like to use the boardroom as a clearinghouse for election results that evening. It is recommended that the board reschedule the meeting to the following Tuesday, November 10th. It's presented, hopefully, for your action this afternoon.
I need a motion to accept this action?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Anyone want to discuss the change? No? All right, with no discussion, I don't think we really need to do a roll call for this, would we? No? Okay. So with that said, all those in favor, please say aye of switching the date?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Date has been changed.
Next item is the appointment of a deputy clerk. Sheila Brown is currently the administrative assistant to the superintendent. It has been past practice for this position to also serve as the deputy clerk of the board. This evening, I recommend that you appoint Sheila Brown as the deputy clerk of the school board.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, board members?
Is Sheila here?
Yes, I'm going to introduce her.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, there she is. We'll let you introduce her in just a second. All right. Do we roll call for this? Since we're, okay, I just want to make sure, we don't need to do anything official. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have a new deputy clerk.
Sheila, if you wouldn't mind standing up, it's my pleasure to introduce you officially to Sheila Brown. Sheila comes to us after having worked in school operations in Pulaski County for several years, and she brings a great deal of expertise to our school division, and we look forward to working with her, both in my office and as the deputy clerk for the board. She'll be sworn in at a later date, but she'll be official very shortly. The next item is the request for funds, one-time capital requests from the board of supervisors. In previous years, the board of supervisors provided Montgomery County Public Schools with one-time funds to be used for capital expenses, including roof repair and replacement, technology, and the purchase of buses. This topic was also discussed during a recent board of supervisors' budget workshop and during the joint meeting of the supervisors and the school board held on March 30th, 2015. I would like to recommend that Montgomery County Public Schools again request these funds from the supervisors. I have attached a letter to the county manager to that effect. If the supervisors approve the request, it would allow more flexibility as we move through the budget process to create a balanced budget. There are some options for some or all of this funding to come from the county through either unbudgeted June revenue, if they do indeed do the 89 cent tax rate again, or through unbudgeted other end-of-year funds that are available to the supervisors. Tonight, I'm requesting that you approve the attached letter for submission to the county manager.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
For many years, several board members have expressed concern that capital projects erode into our operating funds, and that doesn't fit. So this is in line with what we are hoping will be a permanent change, and that capital comes out of our budget, and the supervisors will cover those funds.
Okay. Anything else?
I agree with Ms. Franklin. This has been a battle since I've been on the board, and it continues, and it's got to stop. Capital really doesn't fit where it is right now in our budget.
Anything else?
I do think the board of supervisors is making an effort. There seem to be those members who agree with those sentiments, and I'm hoping that as we move forward with budget processes in the future, that we will get some clarity and some division on that, so that it's very clear about what is what, and we can move forward from there.
No further discussion? All those in favor of the letter, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Letter is approved.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go to the speaker's podium and join Dr. Graham, and we're going to do a presentation on recommendation for school start times with an effective date of 2016, 2017. So we're going to do a tag-team duo here tonight, and Dr. Graham is going to have the first part of the presentation, because she led the committee work that got us to this point, and then I'll end up with my recommendation and the rationale for the recommendation that I'm bringing you this evening. Dr. Graham?
Good evening, Mr. Lyons, board members. Tonight, I would like to take a few minutes to review the work around school start times. First, I want to take the, take a minute to thank the committee for their diligent service on this project. Some of the committee members are here tonight. If they will, please stand as we thank them again for their time and commitment. They have been an outstanding committee. As you will recall, the committee began with the why. The board requested that we explore a change in school start times because of the abundance of research suggesting academic and health benefits for students. Therefore, the school board passed a resolution on October 7th, and the resolution was to achieve secondary start times at 8:30 and elementary after 7:40. So therefore, the committee was developed, and it began its work. This slide provides a snapshot of the work to this point, which includes four meetings of the entire committee. We had some subgroup meetings as well. Extensive research, much of which you may find on our website. A look at other divisions, where we found that locally, most divisions already have elementary schools starting first. We looked at both the pros and the obstacles, and the committee created schedule options and administered surveys. We were very pleased with the number of survey responses, and throughout the process, we heard from the community, we provided information for the board, and we maintained a website to share the information. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about summation. The committee found that the research clearly supports later start times for secondary students because of the achievement and health benefits. Research on start times for elementary students is limited, a fact which we confirmed by directly contacting researchers. We contacted Dr. Finley Edwards and Dr. Peggy Keller, which you will remember we talked about last time, the authors of two studies that held information about elementary school start times. Dr. Edwards explained that in his experiences, researchers spend time on studies they believe will yield significant results. Since sleep research indicates that elementary students can fall asleep earlier and wake earlier, researchers really don't expect to find significant differences at the elementary level related to start times. Therefore, research directed to the elementary level is limited. While Dr. Edwards and Dr. Keller's studies differ on their findings, both agree that the research around elementary is limited. Major points that came to light were that elementary students typically fall asleep earlier and wake earlier, and that the hormones that regulate sleep make it difficult for most teens to go to sleep before 11 and be alert before 8:00 a.m. In short, the root cause of sleep deprivation isn't poor parenting or disobedience, it's based on the hormonal changes in teens. Perhaps one of the most salient findings was that later start times really do result in teens getting more sleep, which can be powerful for their academic and school performance, and that in many cases, changing start times was a low-cost way to increase performance, especially of subgroups. When we looked at our surveys, results were basically divided on whether to change start times. However, there was a consensus on the value of sleep and its effect on alertness. Our surveys indicated that among Montgomery County Public Schools' secondary students, 70% were getting less than eight hours of sleep. Only 4% of our secondary students reported getting more than nine hours of sleep per night, clearly significant. Most elementary parents reported students were getting nine to 10 hours of sleep. This slide you may recall from a previous presentation. Research reveals numerous benefits of more sleep for teens, including improved student achievement, better physical and mental health, and improved behavior. Research has even shown that later start times result in fewer car crashes. The committee also found that other divisions in Region 6 had, have schedules in which elementary schools begin around 8 o'clock. The slide shows just a few examples. There are other examples, such as Henry, Danville, Patrick. We received several comments. 3,008 of the 7,652 survey respondents made comments. These were the most prominent themes from the comments. Given these responses and public comment, we contacted childcare agencies, who all shared that they would be able to adjust and provide services if we did change start times. We contacted Boys and Girls Club, Rainbow Riders, Adventure Club, E-Squared, Connections, Learning Letters, and several. So we also looked at safety. Surveys showed that parents preferred students not be picked up until 7:00. In initial committee work, 6:50 was the latest time that we were able to make work. So due to this desire for the earliest pickup time to be 7:00, and to the board allowing us more time to work on the study, we took an even more in-depth look at what could be done to achieve the goal of picking students up at 7:00 and releasing secondary students by 3:35. And Ms. Blackburn will talk more about that in a few moments. The committee reviewed an extensive amount of research, received a wealth of input, they gave serious consideration and deliberation to this recommendation, realizing that a change in start time impacts our students, our families, our entire community. Consideration was given to safety, childcare, the many challenges of change, what's been successful in other divisions, and ultimately, what is best for students. Given the survey results, the community input, the evidence and research around sleep and the health and benefits to student learning, the committee recommendation to the superintendent is to change school start times. The academic and health benefit for students was the deciding factor and prevailing reason for this. The committee recognized that the change would need careful and thoughtful planning. Of the plans offered in the survey, Plan B was the one that met the criteria set forth in the school board's resolution at the time that we made the recommendation. The committee did and was still open to more options. And with that, Ms. Blackburn, I'll turn it over to Ms. Blackburn, who will talk about what she is going to recommend.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. So I approached making a recommendation to the school board by reviewing the work of the committee, the research, the survey results, and the significant amount of public address and the extensive dialogue that occurred among the board members around this topic. I felt that the success of implementing an earlier start for elementary schools would be significantly impacted by finding possible bus route-saving time options to assure that students picked up, student pickup started no earlier than 7:00 a.m. A 7:00 p.m., or a 7:00 a.m. pickup time A 7:00 p.m. or 7:00 a.m. pickup time corresponds well with the survey results, which indicated that 7:00 was an acceptable starting time with a start time for school of 8:00 to 8:15 a.m. for elementary school students. Most childcare programs already operate as early as 5:30 to 6:00 a.m. in the morning, including Adventure Club, Rainbow Riders, and our own school-operated programs, and the programs extend until 6:00 or 6:30 in the afternoon. So our youngest students are already being served in daycare situations from as early as 6 to as late as 6:30 p.m. Many neighboring school divisions have successfully implemented an 8:00 a.m. elementary starting time. Many of the neighboring communities pick up students well before 7. They pick up students as early as 6:25, and on average, they're picking up students around 6:45. Montgomery County Public Schools uses a transportation routing system called Versatrans. As we had not had any recent training with the program developers for Versatrans, I decided that this would be an optimum time to bring them in as a resource and see what opportunity there might be to fine-tune our schedule and find some flexibility in that bus pickup time. As a result, Rebecca Muma, Eddie Walters, Dr. Lois Graham, Harvey Goodwin, and other representatives from technology spent the better part of two days evaluating routing options. The result is a schedule that establishes a 7:00 a.m. earliest pickup time for any student, and many of the students are not picked up until 7:50. It is the basis of the elementary schedule that I will share. As I considered a recommendation, I paid attention to safety and to childcare options and their cost. I also considered the challenges of change. We are all creatures of habit, and change does not come easy to us. I felt that the cost implications for this school division must be minimal. I looked closely at what works in other school divisions in our area. I considered the key points of the resolution, and I ultimately looked at what works best for all the students while not placing any age group in a situation demonstrated as negative by research or documented experiences. The research is clear that younger children tend to go to bed earlier and rise earlier than teens. At the same time, the research substantiates that the body of chemistry of teens make it difficult for them to fall asleep before 11 or to be alert before 8:00 a.m. The research is reputable. It comes from the National Institute of Health. It comes from the Center for Disease Control. It comes from the American Academy of Pediatrics, and it comes from the National Sleep Foundation. I recommend that the school board consider an elementary start time of 8:00 a.m. with dismissal at 2:30 p.m. with bus pickup beginning at 7:00 a.m. As I stated earlier, many routes will be later, but none will be earlier than 7:00 a.m. Based on the belief that there's a need for a transition time for a new schedule, I recommend the implementation of this new schedule in school year 2016, 2017. This allows time for our childcare providers to establish new schedules for their employees and to evaluate the need for staffing adjustments that may occur with our childcare groups. Not only that, but it also provides time for our families to plan family routines, including possible shifts in childcare needs, to meet the new schedule. The proposed elementary schedule is used in many neighboring districts with reported success. With this schedule, our neighbors have reported no unusual safety issues for younger children with either accidents at bus stops or for walkers, no increase in tardiness or absenteeism, and no lack of community resources to support the after-school childcare programs. For high school and middle school, I recommend a start time of 8:50 with dismissal at 3:35 with the earliest pickup time of 7:40. Currently, our secondary students begin pickup as early as 6:20 a.m. The recommended schedule reflects the preponderance of the research related to sleep and health benefits for teens and provides a reasonable schedule for elementary students. The slide shows the recommended schedule in the chart that you're used to looking at for middle and high school students. The schedule reduces the earliest pickup time for any student in the entire county by 40 minutes. It establishes a reasonable bus pickup time for all grade levels, with elementary students being picked up in a range of 7:00 to 7:50, and secondary students being picked up in a range of 7:40 to 8:40. The dismissal time for elementary and secondary students is supported by appropriate childcare options and minimizes the interruption of the extracurricular program at secondary schools. The potential added cost is related to the Auburn strand, and it adds a bus route using an existing bus route, but requires the addition of a driver at a cost of $26,025. Although I have shown this cost as a possible impact for the schedule revision, there's a good chance that this bus route will be needed next year. In fact, it was a route that was reduced as a budget cost-saving measure several years ago. The routes in Auburn are the longest already, and we're experiencing some afternoon delays at Auburn Elementary School specifically, somewhat related to a bridge issue, but also related to just the transportation route. The recommended schedule honors the sleep research regarding adolescents while also establishing a reasonable schedule for our elementary students. As indicated, I recommend the 8:00 a.m. elementary start and 2:30 dismissal, along with 8:50 secondary start and 3:35 dismissal. In the board's discussion and in some of the public address, we heard suggestions about making possible 15- or 20-minute delays in the current schedule. I do not believe these schedules result in a change for secondary students that is sufficient to meet the research-based recommendations for adolescents. Therefore, I don't recommend them. However, they are presented for your information. Again, I would like to thank the committee and Dr. Graham for the amazing job that they did. There was so much information to assimilate, and their focus set the background for me to look for refinements that may enhance the opportunity for Montgomery County Public Schools to make schedule changes reflecting the research around sleep patterns for children and teens. The next steps regarding this issue are to bring it back to you as an action item on April the 21st. And beginning tomorrow, we would do an effective communication plan to reach out by school messenger, by school newsletters, by news media release, to make sure that our public is informed that the board is considering this important decision. At this point, Dr. Graham and I are available to answer questions that you may have.
Board members?
The change that you're recommending, does that include bank time?
Yes, it does include bank time. Does not have a negative effect on our bank time.
I had a whole bunch of questions, concerns, such as childcare, the elementary studies, and so on, and you pretty much answered all of them beautifully. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to say that, add to what you've said, that the first school to do this was schools in Minnesota back in the 1990s, and they have indicated that there's been significant achievement throughout the years. The other part of that is Peggy Keller, who did the Kentucky study, which is completely flawed, as you well know. She gives her opinions. She gives her thoughts on that, but there are no facts whatsoever in that study. The other things, I was concerned about the childcare, and I still have questions. There's a few people out there who emailed us, or me, indicating that childcare is going to be an expense to them, and it's something that they hadn't planned on, and so on. And it seems to me that, have we talked to these folks that are running these child cares for the possibility of having scholarships or something along that line so that people who are less fortunate, but this change will affect them?
Several of our programs do already offer scholarships. So I'm sure they would continue that. Excuse me. Connections offers scholarships. E-Square offers scholarships. Adventure Club does. So many of them do that. I can't speak to what they will choose to do in future years, but I would think they would.
So there is...
Well, with the private sector also, we don't have the control that we have over, you know, our own programs. The E-Square is our program, as is the other, but none of the folks have directly told us that they plan to change their current delivery methods in terms of fee structure. And, you know, what happens is you now have a group of young folks who are at the childcare programs as early as 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning, and you're probably gonna have a little shift. But it probably, in the long run, won't be a significant increase in the number of families that have childcare, perhaps different families.
Thank you. I was also, having spoken and having read about other programs, having spoken to people in other programs, I discovered, and maybe you can add to this, that high school students and, on occasion, middle school students who work after school, indications that I saw, and maybe these people were just giving the positive side, I don't know, that employers will work with their employees to fit in the hours needed. Did you run across any of that?
Right. The committee asked that question. One, we found that we do have some teenagers that work after school. We had business leaders on the committee who said they're going to adjust because that's what they do as business leaders. The only group that felt like they might not be able to adjust was Adventure Club because they're using teens that would still be in school. Other than that, everybody said they would adjust.
But again, even Adventure Club indicated that with the lead time, that they probably would be able to create the appropriate staffing, so they were not negative about moving forward.
The other item that I had was, in my readings, I discovered that most pediatric studies have indicated that younger people are early risers to begin with. So that would help. I don't want to get personal, but I remember my son, sometimes I didn't want him to get up at 5:30 in the morning, but he did. The $26,025 is gonna be the cost of this.
That would be the cost of adding one driver, and there is a high likelihood that we need to add that route even in 2015, 2016.
Okay. And I'm very, very pleased to see that the start of this will be 16, 17. That's, I think, is an excellent move. Other than that, I couldn't find much wrong with it. It looks awfully good. The benefit for these young teenagers is so critical. All studies have indicated, all studies that I've seen have indicated that achievement is there, and it's continuous when you give these youngsters more sleep.
Well, I've been told that asking questions, sometimes people listen to those instead of presentations are given here. So I'd like to ask again, when will this begin? Will it begin this fall, like everyone's angry about?
No, 2016, 2017 is the recommendation that I would make to the board to provide adequate time for everyone to be ready for that kind of change.
And how early would someone get on the school bus?
The earliest pickup would be 7:00 a.m., and many elementary students would not be picked up until later. The range of time is 7:00 a.m. to 7:50 for elementary students.
And I would like to thank the committee and all the staff that has spent time reading this information, like I think a lot of us that have read these studies. Appreciate that. And, Dr. Graham was wondering, can you tell us, committee members, do you feel like they changed when they came in to the three months that they worked with you from when they, their feelings on this?
They did. When we made our final recommendation, we had table talk for a while. It took some tables a long time to come to consensus, but it came to the overriding fact that for adolescents, the health benefits and the academic benefits were so clear, and that was the deciding factor.
And you had on your committee people involved in extracurricular activities, sports, and parents of young children?
We had business members. We had people to represent sports. We had teachers. We had administrators. We had daycare providers. I'm sure I'm leaving out, oh, we had transportation and parents.
And one of the concerns we've had is students having to be checked out now much earlier in a school day and missing class time. And I have a suspicion that is around a policy that we have about only missing so many classes, and you get to be out of your final exams. But isn't it true that school-sponsored events are excused, and that is not counted toward their absences? With this new bus transportation schedule, will some kids today that are on maybe the bus 45 minutes, will they be on the bus, even though it'll be a different time, a shorter amount of time?
There's likely some reduction in length of time on the bus. Right now, there's 40 minutes. The secondary start at 6:40, and they don't get on the, they don't start school until, you know, almost 8:00.
Is it possible in the next, if we have this as an action item in two weeks, in the next two weeks with this communication, could we publish a tentative bus schedule, what this would look like for all the strands and the different schedules?
I don't know if we're ready to actually publish a bus-by-bus schedule, but we would, we're gonna publish the recommendation we made to you tomorrow. And it's already published, if you looked at the agenda in board docs. So we would work on trying to do something with individual bus routing. But we definitely would have it before, you know, long before the students actually started that schedule.
And what do you envision in the next year, if this was approved, that the school system, how would they, we continue to communicate with the childcare providers and the different places to see that things are getting ducks in the row for the following fall?
Probably as a stakeholder implementing, implementation engagement group, you know, to help us outline the strategic steps that they would need to help make it successful.
My grandson started in one of the schools, one of the high schools, in a childcare, I forget what it was called. Are they gonna be expanded? Are they still in action?
You're talking about the career and technical programs for daycare?
Yes.
Yes, they would remain. We don't have a plan to expand those, but they would remain in place.
They're still there, because they're a godsend. They're marvelous. And that's another option for childcare.
It's a limited option.
Yeah. It's the youngest.
Well, still there.
Sarah, did you have some other things?
I'm done, I think. But thank you.
I have some.
Okay, go ahead.
So first of all, I'd definitely like to thank the committee. You guys did a lot of work. You had a lot of great people on your committee to make the decisions. I'd like to remind everybody that Montgomery County, at one time, did have the opposite schedule, which is what we're talking about. So in my understanding of the history, that was changed to really help out the farming communities, which unfortunately, we see has degraded over the years, sadly. Anyway, I have a couple concerns. One of them would be talking about daycare, and that is the transportation. I know transportation is gonna be a very large issue for most of the daycares. So I would like to see that the Transportation Department at MCPS So I would like to see that the Transportation Department at MCPS work with the daycares to come up with a solution that works for both parties.
I'm going to ask Lois if she would just address what we currently do and what we would do.
What we currently do is if there's seating on the bus, we will allow other children to ride the bus. You know, a child might come to school one way in the morning, and then in the afternoon, go to a daycare. And if there's ample seating, we do that. If we offer seating for every child in a daycare, we would need multiple more buses. So I've talked to some of the daycares about that. They too, it's a cost issue for them, and that they would love to buy vans. So we offer the seating that we can, but we can't offer unlimited seating, or we would need additional buses as well.
Right. But they usually have a set amount of students, you would know.
We have some buses that are packed to the max.
Right. Okay. And then my second concern goes back to the student athletes and those others that would miss, especially in the secondary, that would miss more school because of, you know, where they have to travel to as far as the games and stuff like that. So my concern is, you know, with them not being able to have the option of a study hall, is being able to get their work in and/or make up works, you know, for their homework and tests and stuff like that. So that would be my other concern. I'd certainly like to see, maybe after we've implemented this for a year, go back to the parents and students and see if, you know, other arrangements might be needed to help them.
Having athletic directors and coaches on the committee, we did not find that to be as large a problem as we first thought it would be. And as many surrounding school systems that are already on the flipped schedule, we didn't find that as problematic as we thought it would be. Now, you know, sports by sports, we have to look at each one, but not as big a problem as we really thought it would be.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a couple of concerns. One, when we're talking about students who work after school, there are a lot of students who work a lot of hours. And if their schedule is pushed back, then that means to get the hours in that they need, and a lot of them is to, are to earn money for college, right? So they're going to have to work later. There are laws that says they can't work, but so many hours, depending on how old they are. So that may limit their resources there, you know. Again, I think the committee too, but that committee is made up of a small group of people. The childcare, you know, we're talking about two or three different options we have out there for childcare, but it's vast, you know. So when you're depending on family to help you with your children, and their work schedules, and how all that plays out, I think there's a much broader picture that we're talking about than Adventure Club and Foursquare, you know. And I still am not convinced, I am not convinced, that this is not going to have a negative impact on our elementary students. You know, I, we heard parents overwhelmingly, the parents who came and spoke to us, were saying that this is not what they wanted for Montgomery County. The survey seemed pretty split as to who wanted to change and who wants it to stay the way it is. So I am still not convinced that this is something that we need to do at this time, because we've only looked at a small group of people with information from, quite frankly, their experience, and not from the experience of many, many, many families in Montgomery County.
I think our survey tried to bridge that gap quite a bit. And I'm going to ask Dr. Graham just to comment on those survey results about after-school jobs and family childcare, using younger siblings for childcare, because they were a part of our survey. Although, you know, you can't have 7,000 people on the committee, we did reach out through that survey to try to broaden who we were talking to.
Right, and I understand that, and the results, again, were split.
Results were split. We were surprised with the number of, we thought there would be a lot more secondary students that were providing childcare. We found that to be a very low number, so we were surprised with that. The child, I'm sorry.
Great. I wasn't necessarily talking about siblings providing childcare, or high school students providing childcare.
Right.
I'm talking about situations where other family members, adults, have children, you know, I get off and work at this time, the child is here at this time, it works out. Those situations go on all the time.
Right. What we found, is certainly that does go on, and we didn't ask every question, because we would have had an unlimited survey, of course. But we did, we did ask about the secondary after-school activities that you were mentioning, found out that that was a smaller number than we thought, and that most students spent about two hours a day if they were working or in sports, or something like that, after school. We did find that, as I said, that the childcare was not what we expected. We thought it would be a much larger number of students receiving childcare. We did find that it would increase the after-school childcare, decrease the morning childcare. So it kind of balanced out to some degree. Your concerns are all legitimate. In the end, we just have to make the best decision.
I have one more. The question was asked about the time a child would spend on the bus. So unless the bus route was changed, if they're still going to be going from A to B on the same route, then the time is going to be the same. It wouldn't be shorter unless the bus route changed.
We did change some bus routes. We rerouted some bus routes. That's how the VersiTran system was able to help us get the 10 minutes that I needed to get from 6:50 to a 7:00 a.m. start. So there are some changes in bus routes. Whether there's any great reduction in the time students spend on the bus or not, I can't tell you that, because I don't know the individual routes, but there's not really any increase in the time students are spending on the bus.
But we can't say it's going to be shorter at this point either.
No, but I can tell you, they're not going to be picked up before 7:00 a.m.
Okay, so, you know, my thoughts, so the comments that I might make, don't be offended. I know you've worked hard on this. But, you know, with talking about the bus routes, even if they only get picked up at 7:00, those students are on the bus for 30 minutes, then they're in a bus room or a whole, you know, and for another 30 minutes before school starts. So for me, and there again, I understand completely why we want our secondary students to have this, and I agree with that 100%, but it's easy to make that decision when you're not putting a four- or five-year-old on the bus at 7:00 in the morning, to me. And when you're taking them in your car to daycare, it's a little bit different than when you're putting them on a bus. That's my thought process. For, you know, a four-year-old, a five-year-old, a six-year-old, that's a long time to be on the bus, sitting in a bus room, waiting for school to start. I just have a hard time comprehending that as a parent and a grandparent. And as far as childcare costs, there may be some extenuating circumstance for those that have struggling, but I know lots of parents that are in maybe low-income jobs, that two of them work and put them above the level of getting any assistance, and those are the ones that are going to suffer, because they're the ones that having to pay the extra, and they get no help through anything, ever. And a lot of the families that are struggling get lots of assistance in different areas. So that's my concern, because we've just came from an area of great, doing great things with schools, but we've asked taxpayers to pay more taxes. So this is one more thing we're putting on their plate. I'm okay with change. I like the 15-minute change idea. I can understand that. I think sometimes as a school system, and no disrespect to anyone, we're all or nothing. And I think that makes it hard, because then in two years, we come back and go, gee, you know, this really isn't working. Okay, let's change it back. I mean, it's like we're constantly never getting set somewhere. And I understand we need to do what we need to do to make sure our schools are accredited, but I think we've got great staff that's putting programs in place to make sure that's happening. And we're growing and succeeding. I just really have a hard time, the thoughts of my four-year-old granddaughter having to get on the bus at 7:00 in the morning. That, to me, is just ridiculous. No disrespect.
Ms. Bond, I'm trying not to think about it with my personal situation. I think about the countywide, and like you mentioned, the accreditation for our schools. And we've spent, I don't know the total amount, but we've spent a lot of money on math coaches and instructional teachers and software to make that happen. And we have to think about how the research is showing, and it's especially showing for disadvantaged students who are, we've talked about, a little bit about how this helps them academically. We can't ignore that, we really can't. And it's costing us, bottom line, zero dollars if we have to do this bus route anyway. And I think that's a big difference between what we were showing initially with $50,000 versus zero dollars. We can't ignore this fact.
I agree. That's why we've looked into it. And for me, I think every parent, it is personal. And everybody's got a...
Well, as a school board member, it is not what I'm thinking about.
I hear you, but you still have to look at it through their, that's why they elected me, to see their eyes. And no one, no one that I have talked to has been in favor of this. Even the high school students that I've talked to are not in favor of this, but they don't seem to think coming out and speaking would make a difference. And that's sad. I hate that, because I continually say, you need to come be heard, you need to come be heard. But just because somebody doesn't come and be heard, doesn't mean that they agree with it. And I agree completely. Teenagers need more sleep. But I just don't think if we change the start times, that's going to make that much of a difference. They're just going to say, oh, well, I can stay up later, because I don't have to go to school for another hour in the morning. We see, I see it on the weekends. They know if they don't have to get up, they don't have to go to bed. So I think we're going to find that it's just a revolving, and we're going to continue putting money in our education programs. We're going to continue to do that. Just because we change starting times doesn't mean we're not going to have math coaches. That doesn't mean...
No, I didn't say we're going to take them away, but this is one exercise.
No, I understand, but that's what I'm saying. We're going to continue to do that, so it's not a stop or start thing for me. We're going to continue to do that. And I completely understand why we are looking toward it. But for me, the suffer, the counteract for the elementary is not what I can support, either-or type thing.
We are not going to reinvent the wheels. This has been proven and researched since 1998, and all the school districts slowly realizing that teenagers are suffering, not just academically, obesity, traffic accidents, mental illnesses. I mean, the research goes on and on, and there's a lot of research out there. And I can tell you, I think I read all of them, which I like reading. And the 1998 Center for Applied Research and Education Improvement states that elementary students' energy and learning levels were higher in the earlier morning hours. The earlier start time for elementary students meant fewer before-school transitions. That means daycare, so the students are getting up and active and ready to come to school, instead of going to daycare, getting tired, and coming to classroom. Capture students when they are learning best. Earlier start increases morning instruction time, which was view advantageous for elementary-age students. Students with ADHD were seen to be benefited from earlier schedule, and more students of elementary actually takes advantage of after-school activities, because they are going to leave the school early, so they can actually participate more things. And again, another study done in September 2011 points that one-point standard deviation rise in the test score raises future earnings of those individuals 8%. Moving start time one hour would result $17,500 increase in their future earnings. I mean, I can go on and on, I don't want to take so much time, but this is proven, I don't think we can ignore. We're just catching up, actually, with the rest of the world.
I think one final thing that I'd like to say is what Ms. Wolsey indicated, is that the achievement success of students who are in need, who, students, of students who come from poorer families, is immeasurable. I think you have those statistics that the average, that the student who is struggling at home financially with his parents, and then coming to school and struggling, this change has been immense for that group of students.
That was in Dr. Finley's research and showed that it helps the lower socioeconomic...
And that right there is immense.
You know, I just have a real hard problem with schools constantly being blamed for all of socials, all societies lows, you know. We cannot take care of everything within the school system, and changing start times is not going to take care of everything. It's not going to take care of obesity, it's not going to take care of children who are at high risk already. If they're at high risk at 8:00 in the morning, they're going to be at high risk at 9:00 in the morning. You know, there's some parts of this that just don't get touched on. You might say the start times do it, but it's not. There are societal issues that cause these problems also. So trying to all solve them within the school district, within a school system, I think is just wrong and added an undue burden on folks who are trying to educate our children to say, if you do this different, it's going to change all these other things. And I don't think that's true. And I don't, I understand that with some children, yes, getting up and going to sleep is difficult or easy. I have one of each, as I shared, right? And there are lots of kids out there who are the same way. So I'm, I'm still not convinced that the shift, I'm like with Ms. Bond, shifting everything a little bit, you know, it might be something I can agree to, but hearing from folks and what they say they do and do not want for their children, I can't agree to a change of the time.
Well, and if I could too, I've been reading these studies that all are on out here, and I don't know if anyone took the time to read all of the comments from the teenagers that are on here. Most of them are saying, I'm 15, I am sleep deprived, because I go to bed at 2:00 in the morning, because I'm setting up doing my homework. Thank goodness, my school starts a little later, but it's 4:00 in the morning, I have to get on the bus at 7:30. There are numbers, and numerous and numerous and numerous of students that are saying the exact same thing on here. So when we're reading all these studies, make sure you read all those other things that go along with it. And this is the study that we were, we were talking about, from saying that high school students are sleep deprived. And I do agree with that. But I think sometimes it's, it's just because, like I said, they just don't go to bed, and I understand they can't go to sleep sometimes, but one student was saying, I just, it's helped me tremendously by making myself get on a better sleeping routine. And that's, I think that's where my argument comes from, is I think we just have to say, okay, these students need more sleep, but it's not all the school's fault, like Ms. Franklin said.
Any other comments, board members? I have a few comments, and they're separated kind of categorically. I'll start with the logistical questions that I have. How is this going to affect, if we were to make this change, lunch schedule?
Pardon me?
How's it going to affect lunch schedule? We already have some elementary students who are eating at 10:30 in the morning. Are we now going to be serving lunch at 9:30 in the morning?
We'd have to back it off of the ending time and develop the lunches around that schedule. And again, we also have breakfast in almost all, in all of our schools, actually, secondary and elementary. But we'd have to be careful about the need for students to have the appropriate timing for a nutrition break.
Yep. The other question I have, or two more questions about logistics, those days we have early release, we're going to have students, we have elementary students that need to be picked up at noon at this point. Also, in my mind, prevents, or suggests a logistical nightmare for a lot of families. I did notice on here that we do have, with the recommended schedule that you presented, that there is a range of pickup times that end for high school at 8:40, and then we're 10 minutes later, school is starting. Is that 10 minutes ample time for kids to be picked up and then get to school and start class?
Yes.
Okay. Theoretically, I kind of... Theoretically, I kind of agree with Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin. And just to take it a step further, it's surprising to me that with all of the schools and divisions that have made this change, and some of them years and years and years, that there is not any studies that have been done for the elementary. If this has been such a great thing for the high school students, which I'm not disagreeing with the research, it's surprising to me that with that much success, that there's not been any studies done to see how it is affecting elementary school. I mean, we've, everyone has admitted that there's not much research out there. That blows me away.
Well, I think what Dr. Graham explained is what the way researchers operate, in order to get funding, you've gotta have something in your proposal that's really gonna provide a lot of results, or places don't wanna give you any funding, and so they're not able, they're not gonna find anything one way or the other, is what, is that not kind of what the researchers told you?
That's, that's exactly right. The one little piece that we did find with the elementary was that if you backed it up and started like after nine, that was detrimental because the kids were in daycare so long in the morning and awake so long before school ever started. So that's part of why we didn't recommend the backing it up fifteen minutes. We do know that that was detrimental. But other than that, the researchers have said, we don't expect to find something, so we're not going to spend our money and we won't get funding to do research.
But the research is pretty clear that, and when it says that elementary students tend to go to bed earlier and rise earlier than teenagers do. So that is a significant piece of information.
You know, that, those statements alone, I won't get funded if I do this because I don't think, I don't think there's gonna be anything there for me to, you know, to show. But if no one thinks that and they just don't do it, then who says there's not something there?
Like, it's a great opportunity for some doctoral candidates, but it isn't there.
But we did talk directly with school systems that are doing it, and we asked them about accidents at bus stops, we asked them about accidents for walking students, we asked them about tardiness, truancy, you know, those kinds of things, to see if they were experiencing issues with the earlier start time with their elementary students, and the answers were no across the board.
So, kind of help me understand, how come most of our governor's schools, because I know when my boys were in high school and they were accepted into governor's school, they didn't go because they would've had to gone so early?
Well, there's a little difference in five AM, you know, our, the governor's schools programs are located a pretty good distance from us, and so they're having to get bussed a long way. I'm sure the, you know, governor's school has to work in tandem with the regular school program, because until just recently, they were a supplemental program, not a full day program. They are doing a pilot with county students to make it a full day gifted program. But for them to get students, they had to mesh with our schedule the best way they could.
Oh, I completely understand why, but these are students that are high achieving students, and they're up and out going to governor's school at five and six o'clock in the morning. And they continue to achieve.
And again, the research indicates that the students who actually get the greatest, you know, gain from this are students who perhaps are not as in love with school as some other students are.
Any other comments? Last thing that I want to talk about is just the procedure. You've suggested that we vote on this at our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty-first. Board members, do we feel like that is an ample time for us to make a decision and for the public to weigh in on their thoughts with this potential change?
I do. I feel like we've had plenty of public comment times from the meetings beginning, and when did we start talking about this? In the fall, until now.
Yeah, all of that was without the superintendent's recommendation, however, that's my concern.
I think if we do a good job tomorrow, starting the communication, going out and school messenger and all the many ways that Ms. Blackburn mentioned, that's two weeks.
You know, we had a couple of folks who came and spoke and said they had just heard about this, and we had had information out there for months, you know, so two weeks, you know, I see that's a point, that that's a good point. But I also think at some point you stop and you, and you move on, do something, one or the other. Since this is proposed not to take effect if it indeed passed until sixteen, seventeen, at some point we need to move on. So, we either need to do it at this meeting or the next meeting right after that, and not put this off any further than absolutely the May fourth meeting.
Okay. I think my other thought in that too is, obviously, there's been some misinformation out there, and I don't know how many people have assumed that it was taking place next fall.
The next fall, and people's understanding, fall two thousand fifteen still or sixteen, I mean, just, you know, the school year sixteen, seventeen, I think putting it that way, more understandable than saying next fall, because I mean, the coming fall is, still could be next fall, which is still two thousand fifteen, so we're not starting till two thousand sixteen, seventeen year.
Until tonight, until tonight, there was no time put on it. So I can see how folks were wondering, is this gonna happen next year? You know, because quite frankly, that's the way it was really looking like it was gonna head when we first started this discussion. So I can see how people would believe that.
So, general consensus, board members, do we wanna tackle this and vote on it in two weeks? Do we wanna do it in four weeks? What's, let's kind of take a little straw poll here.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Penny, Ms. Franklin, Jamie? Two weeks? All right. Seems like that's what we have. I'll just say this, that if we do pass this, those rising fifth graders to sixth graders are going to score. They're gonna be like, yes, we did it.
Interesting comment.
And the press doesn't have anything else that they wanna say, they don't wanna hear anything else, apparently. You knew why he was here.
Okay, our next item for this evening is the Special Education Annual Plan. Tonight, Dr. Pat Nelson, Director of Special Education, is here to tell us a little bit about the Special Education Annual Plan process and answer questions that you may have. Under the provisions of IDEA and the regulating governing special education programs for children with disabilities in Virginia, we have to have this annual plan, and it is an application that provides special education and related services to children with disabilities. With that, I won't say anymore, except to thank Dr. Nelson and her team for their time and efforts in the preparation of this plan and the plans for your information this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lyons, Ms. Blackburn, and members of the board. As Ms. Blackburn said, under the provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act and the regulations governing special education programs for children's with disabilities in Virginia, local educational agencies are required to submit an annual plan, Part B, flow-through application for providing special education and related services for children with disabilities. The annual special education plan and funding application for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen has been provided to you in your board packet for your review. The annual plan serves as a formal agreement between our school board and the Virginia Board of Education for the implementation of state and federal laws relating to the education of children with disabilities. On March ninth, two thousand fifteen, the Special Education Local Advisory Committee reviewed the plan and funding application as required. The superintendent's signature certifies that our policies and procedures are in compliance with all federal and state regulations, and the division will comply with implementing the two thousand fifteen, sixteen grant award. At this time, after you're reviewing the application, I will entertain any questions you may have. I know many of you are familiar with the process of the annual plan and have reviewed it for many years.
You're getting off awfully easy, Dr. Nelson. They're all questioned out.
Yes, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, I see, okay, I'm getting to it a little bit more now, that, that is as detailed as we have to be with the monies, the lines that are on page thirteen and sixteen?
Yes, there are two different grants awards, six eleven and six nineteen. One is a K twelve and the other is a preschool. And we get a dollar amount that's based on this year's dollars, but it's not formal, formalized until like early fall, we'll get the exact dollar amount, so we base it on this year's dollars. Really, the bottom line is, as many of you know, the majority of the funding that comes through the federal flow-through dollars really does go to salaries. Very little is used for anything more than that.
Thank you very much, Pat. We appreciate your work on the plan and your team as well.
You know, this happens regularly. There you go.
It didn't lock me out this time, I just messed up, so. So our next item is a first reading of a policy, six dash five point seven field trips and excursions. Our present policy has some language regarding out-of-country trips that could be interpreted as contradictory. I've worked with the policy with both Mr. King and Ms. Shook to clarify the policy, and it's presented this evening for your first reading.
I must have read this about six or seven times, and I'm still not clear exactly what it says or means.
Well, I'm gonna try to, I'll try to answer that. The contradictory language in here is in one sentence, we say that we will not approve them, especially summer programs. So what we tried to do is say that field trips to foreign countries under exchange programs or other school board sponsored programs must receive approval from Montgomery County Public Schools. Any planning for other trips to foreign countries to be taken during summer or other school vacation periods shall in no way state or imply endorsement by the school board. And we try, what we're trying to do is deal with two different kinds of trips. There's a trip that is sponsored by a for-profit company that allows teachers to solicit students to go on the trip with them, and if they get so many students to go with them, then the company offsets the cost of the teacher's expense. And it's not really a school trip, okay? But the one that I brought you is an actual exchange agreement between a school in Germany and a school here. So I was trying to make it so that we didn't say it couldn't be approved just because it happened in the summer, and so that's mine and Nikki's attempt. If you can help me come up with something better, I'm really happy to do it.
Mr. King, would you step up here and clarify any questions that are about to come to you?
So the Germany trip, it falls under the last Senate?
The exchange, it's an exchange trip, and it could be approved.
Okay. So the other trip that you outlined, we don't need to approve it at all, anyway.
And they shouldn't publicize it as a school trip.
May I? I'm not sure that it's happened here, but in several school districts that we've represented, companies will get in touch with the Spanish teacher and get the Spanish teacher to use the classroom to recruit students to go on one of their private trips. And so we've had to work with administrations to disavow any relationship with the schools for liability purposes. And so the policy as originally written, I think was designed to say, we don't get in that business. But because of the discussion you all have had over, I guess, last two or three months on a specific issue, we wanted to make sure that when you all approve them, and they are Blacksburg High School, Christiansburg High School, Auburn High School trips, that you're not precluded by policy from approving those. Did I state that accurately?
I thought you did a good job.
So we're still allowing these companies, these private companies to solicit, or no?
No, no, not at all. That's why this-
Completely axing that, the ability for them to contact the Spanish teacher.
Well, we can't tell them they can't communicate with them, but what we're saying is they're not ours.
Right.
And in fact, when those have happened before, not in your district, but in other districts, we've had the superintendent call the teacher in and have the company sign something that expressly says this is not, in your instance, Montgomery County's trip.
And generally, you don't allow them to use school board property for their informational meetings, and you make sure that all of their literature is stamped, this is not a school-sponsored activity.
So it can still happen, we're just not giving our endorsement to it, is that correct?
They wanna sign up at the mall, they can go with the people that they sign up at the mall with.
Right. Okay.
Well, and I like that, because a lot of the foreign-type trips that come home with students, they're not seeing that it might not be a high school-funded type program.
That's absolutely the problem.
You know, they're only seeing, hey, my teacher's gone, this is a great program, and I wanna go too, because that, that does happen.
And please don't get me wrong, I don't think anybody was doing anything intentionally to undermine, but the liability issues, as you might imagine, are huge.
Well, there is one underlying thing, is that the teacher recruits six or seven or eight students so that they can go free.
There is that.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it's all about, is they wanna go over to Europe free, and then they're quote, "the chaperone." And there are some horror stories out there about these trips.
You know, I think we just don't want to be in the business of having responsibility for those trips.
There's a whole nother issue that's sort of related to it, which is post-nine eleven, a lot of school districts had overseas or out-of-country field trip policies that were aligned with the security codes that were being implemented by the federal government. And so post-nine eleven, a lot of these field trips were no longer even being had because of the dangers. And so this is sort of a blending of those thought processes.
I know we probably discussed this already before, but how many of these trips do we actually get presented to us in a given year?
Since I've been here, the same trip has been presented twice. It was presented two years ago, and then it was presented this year. And it was this BHS, Foreign Exchange Relationship with a German school.
And they only do it every other year.
Every other year, so we're, I mean, we're writing a policy that essentially affects us every other year at this point. Is that fair assessment?
Yes, but it would give you guidance for other situations that might arise as well, and schools' guidance about what is okay.
Right. Mr. King, you feel good about the way the language of that is, as presented?
At minimum, I would want you all to know if you have students out of the country with your permission. So this, that formalizes it so that you have to approve.
Just out of curiosity, this is our first reading of this. I know typically we don't like to take action on it. Is there any reason for us to prolong this, or could we move it to an action item tonight? I'm asking board members.
Well, again, I think we better be careful with that, because we don't wanna start a policy of having these things come up before us for reading and then us acting on them, because there may be, this is a very simple one, but there may be something that someone needs to think about, and so I don't know if you wanna get into that habit or not, but that's just my point.
And I agree with the point, but again, I think this is a simple enough change that-
Well, and I think we'd already talked about it before when it was presented to us.
Right, but I think, well, I know, there was no language put in front of us to address what we wanted to do, and one of those things is, public has an opportunity to come and communicate with us, either- either here, email, phone calls, whatever. So, I think we need to allow that time for that to possibly happen.
Can we make it an action item for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Let's do that.
Okay, my final item this evening is an update on the budget.
Found the money?
No. But, you know, there's opportunity. We've got that letter we're going to send to the supervisors, and we hope they respond positively. I previously provided you with an updated budget sheet, and again, this evening, it's attached to your agenda. It reflects the current status of our budget, which includes the addition of $445,250 in state money to support the 1.5% average compensation increase for state-recognized SOQ positions. It also reflects the county manager's proposal of $1.975 million in additional funds from the county's revenue. As you know, this is still a preliminary look since the supervisors continue their budget development. On Thursday, April 9th, at 6:30, the supervisors will hold a public hearing on the advertised tax rate and the proposed budget. If nothing else changes, the gap between possible revenue and our needs-based budget with these adjustments is about $1.5 million, down from the initial gap of 3.9. The major drivers of the budget gap in 2015-16 are the same three I talked about last time, but I think they bear repeating. Number one, the desired two-step compensation increase costs $2.1 million, of which $445,000 is funded by the state. The current plan does not add a compensation improvement for top-down employees. Doing so would require an additional $110,000 to $200,000. A bonus plan for these employees could be funded from carryover funds, while a recurring increase in compensation would have to be funded from the operating budget. Secondly, the next driver is the potential increase in health insurance cost. And actually, over time, it's gone down some, because we started out at like $900,000 or so for insurance cost, and we're now at $776,000. And that increase in cost is only for the currently, the current insurance plan, you know, just that group of employees that we're currently insuring. That would be the increase to continue insuring them with the same plan. And thirdly, the required funding of health insurance for part-time employees working 30 hours or more at a cost of $1.5 million, based on the Federal Affordable Healthcare Act. So, those are the three big drivers. They amount to $4.4 million increase for next year. My staff and I have continued to look at options for making recommendations to the board for cost savings or cost avoidance. And at this point, we tend, we plan to recommend to you some things, and these are the ones that we're thinking that we'd like to recommend. It might be an opportunity to have a little preliminary conversation about them. The first one is offering a new insurance option to our employees. It's the Health Savings Account. It would be strictly optional, just another thing for employees to choose. Doing so has the potential to lower the increase in insurance cost for the employee, for the employer, from $776,000 to $211,000. That would be a cost savings of $565 towards that 1.5 million that we're trying to get to. The board update included additional information about this option, and we will plan to make a presentation on April the 21st. Essentially, if an employee chose this option, they would have no out-of-pocket monies needed to meet their deductible, because we have structured our plan recommendation to you so that the plan fully funds the planned deductible. And then, both the employer and the employee still pay lower premiums. If we had 95 employees take advantage of the high-deductible healthcare plan, the savings would be the $565,000, and that's about a 5% participation rate. It's pretty much an industry standard. Again, I would reiterate that participation in the plan would be strictly an employee option. Montgomery County Public Schools, through our insurance consultant, would provide significant opportunity for employees to be knowledgeable about the plan before they choose it. The employee would also have the opportunity to change their plan every year during open enrollment. So, that's one thing that we really want the board to take a serious look at because of the $565,000 savings, and because all of our surrounding counties already have this as an option for employees. And they are not having negative feedback from their employee group who have decided to use the high-deductible plan. Secondly, I'm gonna recommend to you that we do the early retirement incentive again this year. If we have 10 participants, we would save $140,000. So, that's 140, and we've got 565 if you do the health plan. The third piece is requesting that the supervisors assist us with the capital costs that are $775,000, either from their unbudgeted June, they call it windfall revenue, or from other undesignated county revenue. I feel encouraged that they may do some or all of that, and we've signed the letter tonight for the county manager, or you approve me signing the letter. But there are some other options if they don't come forward to do that, or if they only come forward with part of the money, because we do have some residual bond funds remaining from some past projects, Prices Fort, Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. But there's about $500,000 in residual bond funds, and we have Montgomery County Public Schools' end-of-year carryover. So, I feel very encouraged that we will find a way to fund the 775 without having to do it from the operating budget. And that would put you at filling the gap, the 1.5, which would be huge, considering that we've come from 3.9 down to 1.5, and we have some realistic options that are not painful to anyone to be able to possibly solve these. So, the next steps. The Board of Supervisors holds their public hearing on April the 9th on the tax rate and on their proposed budget, and I think that starts at 6:30. On April the 20th, the county's budget is scheduled for final approval. Montgomery County Public Schools has a work session on 4/23 to balance our budget. You have set a date that you're holding for a possible second public hearing, which is April the 28th, and that one is an optional public hearing. And then, finally, we have to be completed and approved for me to hand a budget to the supervisors by May the 5th. So, because of the very compressed timeframe that we have to complete our work once the supervisors complete their work, we keep talking every time my staff and I meet about possible ways to balance this budget. And so, the ideas that I've brought you have tried to maintain the focus on the board demonstrated priorities, which are minimizing the impact of additional reductions at the school level and the classroom level, while keeping employee benefits whole and addressing the salary schedule, including the part-time benefits package. So, I'm open to questions or comments.
Question. The, allegedly, the Affordable Care Act has been receiving a lot of pressure to react to what it's done to the schools throughout the United States. Have we heard anything about that yet?
Well, we know that the Affordable Healthcare Act is under fire, but you know, obviously, there probably are not going to be any decisions made about any changes to the structure of the Affordable Healthcare Act until August or September. And so, I think we have to move forward as if we must do this.
The way it is, okay.
And if it changes, then this board would have a discussion about whether you want to go ahead and say, we're gonna provide part benefits for our 30-hour employees, or we're not. I mean, it would be the ideal time to have that conversation. And in your board update, I also provided some information about thinking about restructuring the part-time incentive, not touching anybody that's already in it, but so that you do a market analysis of your positions, and if the market analysis says you ought to put that money in there, then just make it salary. Don't call it, you know, part-time incentive, let's just make it salary. But you don't have to consider that in relationship to your current decision. My plan is to bring that back to you for discussion after you adopt a budget. But we're thinking about it. If it's salary, then let's make it salary. Let's not call it something else.
How much did you say that we would need to set aside if we wanted to provide something for the folks at the top of the pay scale?
It's a range of $110,000 to $200,000, and that depends on whether you want it to go into the salary schedule, or whether you want it to be a bonus. It's gonna be a discussion that I know you'll want to have. I think, I would just offer my feeling about it, that at this point, we have not been able to adjust the ranges of our salary schedules. And every time we bump the top, we basically create an artificial additional step. That's why I would say perhaps this might be a good year to do a bonus at the top, and then, in your carryover money, try to allocate some funds to do, take that Evergreen study that we've, that we're working from, perhaps see now what the next step to that would be. How can we address these scales while we also continue to address placing money in employees' pockets, so that we get a salary schedule that has true integrity to it? So, that's kind of where my head is at the moment, but you know, you'll have an opportunity to discuss that, and you know, if you've got ideas that you would like information about, if you would let us know, we'll have the data for you.
And I would say, at this time, you don't know, have a picture of how much carryover we'll have for this school year?
Well, anything I tell you is strictly an estimate and a guess somewhat, because you don't know until, you know, the, you really don't know till the end and the end. But, you know, we know that we moved $1.4 million in salary savings, so we expect that the 1.4 would be there. We know that you had budgeted $230,000 for possible affordable healthcare implementation during this year if we had to do something. So, if you take the 1.4 and you take the 230, it's reasonable to expect that you would have, you know, 1.6, 1.7, without a doubt. And you might have more, but you would likely have that amount of money.
And that's already in the budget that you've presented to us, that, those two numbers?
Yes, those numbers have already been moved in as spending different ways for next year.
There's not a line on there that already includes the 110 to 200,000 as a bonus anywhere?
No, because we wouldn't have access to the bonus money until end of the year, but you know, the salary adjustments don't get made till July 1st, anyway, and a bonus, you can designate a time for it to be paid.
What is the number of employees that we have at the top end?
Joe, you're gonna have to tell me that number, I don't remember.
I have to look it up. Give me just a second. Take your time.
While he's looking that up-
That's 9,000 or some change.
I would just like to say, I like the recommendations that you have put before us. The high-deductible plan is, at my place of employment, is one that is offered, and there are folks who have taken advantage of it, and it has worked well for them. You know, it can be a scary thing to start off with, but it has worked for some folks.
Carries distinct, it carries distinct reductions, significant reductions, in the employees' cost to carry a family plan. It's significant.
Yeah.
I've heard the same from other organizations that use that.
We have approximately 188 employees that are off-scale, which means they're, that those are a mix of teachers and other employees that are at the top of the scale or beyond.
Okay. Thanks.
Can you tell us the average number of employees who've taken advantage of the early retirement? I know we usually get a good result from that.
It averages somewhere between 10 and 12 every year. Last year, I believe, we had 12. So, some years are better than others, that's why we put in a conservative 10 into this number.
Well, several years ago, we offered the early retirement, didn't we? Did 16 ring a bell?
It was maybe the first time it had been offered in a while, though. See?
Right.
If you, if it's not there, and you've got a bunch of people-
But it was a good, it was, I mean, it was-
Oh, yeah.
Something like 16.
It was a significant-
Which-
Yes, we, the issue is, is that this is a first time in quite some time that, or ever that I know of, that we've done it two years in a row, if we offer it two years in a row. So, that also kind of plays into our figure.
Any other questions or comments about the budget?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate all of your guys' work. To find that $1.4 million, $1.5 million has not been a small feat, and I applaud you.
And it's not painful.
Yes. Okay.
So, I'm finished.
Moving on, next item is unfinished business. Board members, does anyone have any unfinished business that they would like to address at this point? Hearing none, we will move to new business. Does anyone have any new business that they would like to share?
I have a new business I'd like to share. The Montgomery County League of Women Voters regularly holds desert events with local government agencies to serve as a question and answer with the elected body. They have asked the school board to participate in an event. The events are open to the public, and attendees ask questions of the board members, usually 20, 25 people attend to the events, and they take place on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. There's a flexibility based on the board's needs. So, I don't know how our board feels, but if the board decides to participate, it will need to be publicized as a meeting of the board, and I don't think we need to have an agenda, but we will have to add it to the agenda prep so that it will be announced to the public.
That's if, that's if more than two of us attend.
That's correct.
So, my suggestion could possibly be that we have two of us attend this, so it doesn't have to necessarily be an official meeting. I leave it up to you guys to-
When is it?
It can, it can set, you know, they're approaching us to hold a meeting so they, you know, they can, you know, we have a public, you know, the public can ask questions, so different, different medium to be able to reach the public, I think. And it can be held, their suggested time, days are Tuesday, but obviously, Tuesday is not probably good, since we have board meetings on Tuesday, too. But Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursdays, they suggest, and it's at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock, and I don't know where they exactly plan to hold, but I guess it's just an imitation.
It's an inquiry about your interests, and then they would work with you about scheduling a date.
Yeah.
I've spoken to the League of Women Voters several times over the last few years. It's been in the Blacksburg Government Building there when I spoke.
And I've attended one of these events before. I'd be glad to do it, so. I'd be interested as well.
Yeah, I would, too, as long as it's, you know, the time and the day or work.
Sure. Well, pull, pull straws.
I guess that would be a meeting and an entire board, so. Tell them that, I guess, is that something you're-
Would you like to be?
Doing the organization of this.
Well, tell them we're very interested.
Brenda will help us with it. Brenda Drake will help us with it, because they reached out to her initially, anyway.
Very good. So, we're interested.
Yeah. And that's all.
Any other new business, board members? Moving on to announcements and information, does any board member have anything to tell us?
Yes, I do. I went to the National School Board Association meeting down in Nashville, and I attended several events, but two spectacular programs that I don't want to talk- several events, but two spectacular programs that I don't want to talk about it right now, because it's, there was so much information that I need to sit down with Ms. Blackman and go over it, and then I'd like to make a presentation to the board. It was really, really powerful stuff.
Yeah.
I would like to thank the Montgomery County Educational Foundation for the great benefit concert that they did. It was quite amazing. It still amazes me, even after all these years of living in Montgomery County, all the talent that we have locally. So it was, it was nice to have that reminder of how good of artists we have around here.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate those that attended the event, because we had a good, pretty good turnout.
And I would like to announce that I am running for reelection.
All right. That's an official one.
That's right. I attended History in 3D event at Blacksburg High School, and that was a virtual tour of Muzargone Battlefield and Cemetery, largest overseas US cemetery with over 14,000 soldiers laid to rest. That was an, you know, that was a long event, but it was very interesting, and it was very interesting to see 3D scanners scanning all your busts while you're standing there. I can even, you know, still figure out how the regular scanner works, so. And it's a corp, you know, Virginia History Department, IT Department, and Colin Baker History Department at BHS organized. There were middle school students and high school students, and they were pretty interested. It was amazing to see the cemetery, you literally can walk around, because it's 3D and in front of you, which you may never be able to travel and see, you know, that particular place in France. So that was pretty interesting.
Okay, anything else? I'd just like to share, just real quickly, that obviously this week marks the 150th anniversary of the surrender at Appomattox Courthouse, and we actually have some of our students, and I know personally, who are going to be participating in the reenactments that happen over the next few days. And so encourage anyone who's available and would like to head down to Appomattox and watch that, it's, could be pretty awesome.
They are quite impressive.
It is very impressive.
And they are very impressive.
So, that said, we will move on to upcoming, upcoming school board meetings. You can see those, we have one next Tuesday for professional development, and then obviously the two-week, meeting that we have in two weeks, where we have just filled the agenda quite amply, aptly, last, and then the budget work section, work session on the 23rd.
What time is the 14th?
We'll have dinner at 6:00, and the meeting will start at 6:30. We'll have Olive Garden.
And the 23rd?
The 23rd budget work session, 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
With that said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? You're adjourned.
We're going to have to put a padding on that.